Without further ado, I'll call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for being here. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance and get into a moment of silence, I just want to call your attention to the fact that there was an unfortunate fatality in the town just yesterday, and I feel for all of the officers and bystanders who had to witness that or be involved in. Of course, our thoughts go out to the deceased and his family and those motors that were involved in something real tragedy. So be thinking about them and everybody else who's not doing so well tonight and this week. Let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll do a little one second.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now if we will, we'll take a few moments for silence. Thank you so much. Folks, we have an agenda before you. I don't think we need to make any changes to it, so if you would be so obliged.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. First item on our agenda is a public hearing. It's about a proposed zoning amendment. It has to do with outdoor dining and the lighting around it. Somebody changed me. In case you're gonna kick us off.
Yep, ready to go.
Make sure.
As you said, there will be a public hearing tonight, and the following rules of procedure will apply to this hearing. A public notice was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards. The notice meets and exceed, or exceeds statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of this notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing as well. The town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing. They also shall be submitted in full to the town clerk. If speaking, please limit your comments to matters relevant to the actual issue upon which the hearing is based. A five-minute exception will be made if there's a spokesperson for a group, or if your statement was submitted in writing to the town clerk prior. All speakers will need to come to the microphone. Your statement will be recorded. There shall be no debates, of course. And when coming up, please identify yourself and your address. So now the public hearings come into order, and this hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following: a proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 153.077 signs, allowing strings of electric light bulbs for approved outdoor dining and activity areas. There is one individual that has signed up to speak tonight for the hearing, so Karen Brown.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Karen Brown, the President and CEO of the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber represents nearly a thousand businesses on the Outer Banks, including 157 Kill Devil Hills businesses. The Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce is here to just speak in support of the proposed amendment presented by Nusa Beach Grill and being forwarded to you from the planning board, allowing for the string lights that meet the conditions outlined in the proposed amendment. Allowing these lights will give our local businesses the opportunity to provide outdoor lighting for dining and waiting areas, and will be a welcome sign for our businesses. And that's really all I have to say. And I hope Seal Seafood Festival wants out of there.
Anyone else desire to speak at the hearing? All right. Unless there are other comment, then turn it over to the board.
You all are familiar with this and have seen the paperwork that came with it. We're talking about string lights, like cafe lights, only in the outdoor seating and waiting areas with a healthy bunch of restrictions. They've got to be levelled. They can't be more than 15 feet above the ground. They can't be attached to signs or in the drive aisles or in the landscaped area. It's quite restrictive, but it does open that door for those cafe lights that I think are pretty widely popular. I think we're always a little nervous about things kind of going too far. This doesn't go very far, but it does get that thing to be allowed, which I thought was well-written, well-crafted, in my opinion. But I'd love to open up for discussion or a motion.
I would agree. I think it's something that's going to be beneficial to the restaurants and to the town in general, and I'm very much in favor of that.
I have support of it as well, and I like the fact that it also is kept specifically in commercial, like industrial zones, not too close to the beach, and not too close to residential as well, so it's in the right spots.
Yeah, I think when I go on vacation, I see them in a lot of other places.
Right.
Friendly and welcoming, and we've penned it in so it doesn't get too out of control, I'd say. Well, if there isn't any dissent here, looking for a motion, and we have a consistency statement that needs to go along with it.
May I like to make a motion of approval. Orders 153.077d, "Outdoor Dining and Activity Areas," lighting is consistent, both comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans for town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable. The amendment is reasonable and in public interest because it allows low-impact lighting for outdoor dining areas.
Second then. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. One more chance for further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of this, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Exciting to see that. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, everybody, for bringing that to us.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next item on our agenda is public comment. We do this twice every meeting. Welcome to speak on any topic, up to three minutes. Just let us know where you live and your name, and we'll do that now and again at the end of the meeting. I assume no one has signed up?
No.
Our huge crowd here. Anyone out there?
That's great.
All right, hearing no public comment, we will move on. No need for response to public comment. Are there any other introduction or presentations that weren't listed in the... All right, we'll move right on. Pass old business into new business.
Yes, sir. This is a continuation of where we left off at the last meeting on our beach nourishment. Item A is a bond order authorizing the issuance of special obligation bonds, the town's portion, Series 2021A, and a resolution providing for the issuance of a special obligation bond, town's portion 2021A, and they're both attached. Item B is the bond order authorizing the issuance of special obligation bonds. This is a FEMA grant project, Series 2021B, and a resolution providing for the issuance of the special obligation bond. The two bond orders is itemized, establish the town's intent to construct the beach erosion control and flood and hurricane protection work project now and in the future. Each order authorizes special obligation bonds with the purpose of financing that construction for both the town's portion of the project in the amount of $1,515,077, and the FEMA portion of the project, $4,148,371, and the orders with provisions of the North Carolina General Statute. All four items must be adopted by the Board of Commissioners, and staff recommends Board of Commissioners make a motion to adopt A, the bonds as I just stated, and then B, the bonds and the resolution also as presented, and a motion would be in order.
All right, some light reading there for you. Don't make your too thick. There are lots of rules about this stuff, which is good. Keeps everybody in line. Kind of technical, any questions you have for the town manager before we get this going? It's a big item that we've been working on for many years, getting to this point. We're right around the corner. Here for making it happen. Thanks again to staff for getting us to this point. Know how much work it is to organize all these big projects. Furiously reading through my race. Petching up on their home. No, just kidding. I'm kidding. Take your time with it, for sure.
I'll take the staff. I would move that we approve new business as presented. A, the bond order authorizing the issuance of special obligation bonds, the town portion. Do you want the whole language in it?
As presented was good.
And then, item B, the bond order authorizing the issuance of special obligation bonds, FEMA grant project. And then also, item C, the inter-local agreements with Dare County. Have I got anything yet left there?
No, that's fine. That's simply, as everyone knows, the county is the contracts for the project, and then we reimburse Dare County our portion, as does the other municipalities.
Yeah, and then I would make that as a motion for approval.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
Nice work, Debbie.
I have to give all the credit to the staff and to the folks from Parker Poe and the Carter Group. It is a lot, and they've spent a lot of time putting it together.
And I will mention that this agreement has been reviewed by the town attorney.
Yes.
And he's encouraged with it, so we'll give him his little highlight, too. How about that?
I can't believe I forgot.
I don't even need it.
This is good job, everyone. Thank you very much.
Can't have too many eyes on these things. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Been right along. I know we have some committee reports. I know there, we haven't mentioned at least, that we had some info from the Visitors Bureau.
Yes, I'll go ahead and...
Yes, please do.
Is that okay?
Yes, please do.
I think mine is probably a combination of committee and Commissioners, but I'll just buy them. So, the Outer Banks Tourism Board just released a press release a couple days ago. You might have already seen it. But they, the North Carolina State redid the way that they are calculating tourism dollars, and so our tourism dollars actually went up to 1.4 billion, I think, before it was sitting at our own 1.1 or 1.2. And so, that's an increase. We are the, we rank the fourth-largest tourism destination in North Carolina, but in 2020, we were the only one that posted, of those tourism destinations, that posted really good numbers. Our decline was only 2%, where other areas were in the 40s and 50s decline. So, as we all know, this isn't any new information because we've been busy yet. So that leads to 123 million in generated state and local tax revenue, which is no small dollar amount, as we all know. So, that's sort of, you know, I wanted to report that because I think those are really important numbers. A third of the jobs in Dare County are tourism jobs. There's 11,803 tourism jobs.
In Dare County.
And so that sort of led me to think about what's happening in California and that oil smell in California. And I know we, when we all were voted in, we redid our offshore oil drilling opposition resolution, and I didn't know how often that should be done, if we need to revisit that every couple of years. I know that was, so it's been about two years since we redid that. Is that...
We can certainly put it on the agenda for November. I don't think you can do it too many times.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I would just, given these, you know, obviously, the environment is, you know, the most important thing, but, you know, Huntington Beach has been closed for eight or nine days, and, you know, we were closed for five or six weeks, May of 2020, and we saw what that did. So, you know, just imagining what a closure like that would do for us is, would be pretty devastating. So, Terry and I had talked about it, and he sort of thought maybe might be a good time to redo it in the next, you know, if we did sort of every November, or, you know, every other November kind of thing.
We could certainly have that on the agenda.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
That's a good deal. That's very good. I mean, that's, we don't have any other, you know, we don't have a fallback if we have a problem like that.
Right.
All of these are in the tourism...
We need to be very, very strong in our opposition to the offshore operation and I think.
Right, and until we get some kind of moratorium, which, which hopefully we can one day.
Yeah, good job.
One day hope for.
And we can, if order is in agreements, we can rewrite that resolution to actually reference this latest tragedy in California.
Okay, that would be great. That would be great. And resent to our local legislators as well. Okay, that'd be wonderful.
Super. Any other, anyone else collect this type of, committee reports or...
I think he has them.
Yeah. I think he's tough to follow.
Yep.
I will share one thing that the Community of Years Commissioners are having our meeting tomorrow morning, where we will select the winners of this year's Community of Years Awards. Ready? We're, for that to be, we're going to have one. Gladly discussed. Lively indeed, because a lot of us in that group have pretty strong opinions that we have to defend. Need a BJ there to help me. Make an argument.
Somebody.
Super. Okay, let's kind of overlap to Commissioners' agenda. The Commissioners' agenda, I didn't want to pass anybody out.
Nothing here, Mayor.
On the Mayor's agenda, we've got a couple of items. The first is the proclamation declaring November 2021 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. For those of you who may not know, not only is Alzheimer's irreversible and, you know, terrible progressive brain disorder, but it affects like 6 million people of all ages. It affects 1 in 10 people who are 65 and older. That's a, that's a huge number. And here's another stat I did not know, which I thought was worth mentioning. Since 2000, the deaths from the disease have increased by 123%. So, you know, bringing this to the fore, so people think about it, and think about the caregivers and their loved ones who are affected by the disease, and helping them move towards help with, there's some resources here in this, in this proclamation. So, if you would be so kind, I'd love to make this, make this official and recommend that we adopt it as designating, designating November 2021 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion and a second?
Yep.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you so much. Couple other items I want to make sure people kept in front of them. Early voting is about to start. We will start that here at Town Hall on October 14th, just three days away. Through October 29th, it's Monday through Fridays, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There'll also be a Saturday voting opportunity on the 30th. That's from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Election Day will also be at Town Hall, Tuesday, November 2nd, from 6:30 a.m. till 7:30 p.m. So, plenty of time to vote, no reason not to. Lots of chances. Tell all your friends. Other thing to tell all your friends about is, with the popularity of our big, our first light markets this past summer, by popular demand and great ideas from all around, we are getting ready to put on holiday markets, first light holiday markets. The dates will be Saturday, November 20th, Tuesday, November 23rd, Tuesday, December 7th, and then Saturday, December 18th. On that Tuesday, the 7th, there'll be a tree lighting, a sleigh ride, Santa Claus. Should be great fun for friends and family and visitors alike. We'll have some bands there, students from the local school bands will be there, and we are going to do this inside the hockey rink at the Aviation Park. Yeah, so we'll be able to get some, there's lighting there, be able to do it after dark. Should be quite festive. So we're looking for participants, so spread the word. Anybody who's listening online or can post this on Facebook, just tell your friends. Applications to be processed on a first-come, first-serve basis deadline is this Friday, October 15th. So hopefully they're all quite aware. We've probably reached out to them, emailed, and we'll give them a call and that sort of thing. But anybody participate, the applications on the town website. Just look up First Light Market in KDH, it'll pop right up there for you. And that's all I got for that. Did I do all right?
Thank you.
Let's see here. That's all I've got. Next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Agenda.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Nothing there. Casey, anything?
Nothing. All right.
All right. We'll circle back to the Consent Agenda. I know there's some...
There is. Just three things this evening. The first is the minutes from the September 13th, 2021 meeting, the monthly report from August 2021, and lastly, Budget Amendment Number 7, which is to record the encumbrances that were outstanding at June 30th, 2021. Staff would recommend approval of the Consent Agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second. We'll have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, name? We have Consent Agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so the next item is our public forum. Casey, you're gonna introduce this for us?
I can do it.
You got it. Are you gonna do it?
I got it. I got it.
Sorry.
The Board of Commissioners encourages public input as it considers issues that may directly impact the town, its residents, property owners, and visitors. As a part of that commitment, the Board establishes two public forums annually to hear about issues imported to our citizens. Citizens are invited to attend the forum and given an opportunity to request specific items to be included with the agenda items. We haven't had any, any topics submitted to the Board prior to the meeting, and we did get one right in, and I think you have the hard copy at your place. This is from Mrs. Margaret Bone concerning noise and fireworks at event homes on South Virginia Dare Trail. And turn it over to you, Mayor.
Certainly we can tick up that item. Everybody knows we're trying to play nice with our neighbors, and we know that the challenge of those existing large homes, you know, there's like the density of that many people together under one roof. I know that the police department has probably had plenty of interaction there. Yes, maybe, no, probably.
Yes, but not to the particular ones in the mail.
Oh, really? Okay.
It's 2009's John Yanks.
Oh, really? Okay. Gotcha. How about that? Well, at the very least, I'm sure that we can have some outreach there when it comes to the, for the houses that are leased through a property management company. We could work with the property management company to have them enforce their leases, which I'm sure have some protections built into them. And I'm sure that your force is out there to be able to help with communication between guests and neighbors. We appreciate all the hard work. We know that's never fun.
And if anyone would like just to come to our office and discuss, I'd be glad to help in any way I can. Just come by and see us.
That's great. Yes, yeah. Face-to-face is a great way to do it, and hopefully we can do it without masks here shortly. It looks like our numbers are coming down. Hopefully we can figure out how to have fewer masks by the next meeting if all goes well. Given that the public is not bringing up other topics, and unless you had something you'd like to bring to us, well, how should we proceed?
I'd like to ask one question for Assistant Chief Harris. You know, firework concerns are not just limited to the oceanfront. They happen all around town, and just for the general public to know, if somebody is worried about or hearing fireworks going off, what should they do? Who should they call? How should they handle that?
During the nighttime, they should call our emergency or non-emergency number, which is dispatch, and our officers will respond. Unless it happens to be right in the area, they need to be able to point out where it come from, because obviously they also won't see it. But they will go up there and deal with it, you know, look into it, and hopefully find who did it, and explain to them it shouldn't be done.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
The tricky part is seeing who's doing it in the dark night makes it really challenging. You know, we want everybody to be safe, follow those laws that are here to keep us from catching fire mostly, or hurting ourselves. And, you know, letting people sleep and dogs have some peace and love for, you know, 364 days a year.
And I have a quick question, too, regarding this for Assistant Chief as well. The noise ordinance is 10 p.m. Is that, like, the, when you start, is that the...
It's different times.
Okay, different times for...
And it goes, pretty nighttime starts at 11, and then you got your day, and then your decibel readings are different.
Change for the, okay, okay. So in that area, it would be 11 p.m. then?
The...
The decibels would...
Time change here.
Okay.
Decibels for a trip.
Yeah.
Used to be, had to spend a lot of money for a decibel reading. Now you gotta out for that.
I know the, when you look at those houses, too, from the ocean side, the way they're designed, those are the ones that have the open. And I'm guessing, like, just thinking about, I'm guessing what's happening is it's echo, you know, they probably get a lot of echoing out.
Yeah, as well.
Yeah, just based on the design of those houses.
Yeah. And again, if anybody ever has questions, call us. If they think, if it's something in the night, our guys are good, but if it's daytime, they just have a general question, get up with me at the office.
Right. You know, we've got light cards on the beach. You can make those connections as well, you know, out in that area.
Fewer than we used to.
Fewer than, yeah. Definitely manpower is tough, particularly this time of year.
You know, I do have a concern that I'd like to bring up, and I know it's probably late in the game to address this issue, but I'm very concerned that the plan is, seems to be moving forward to rebuild the property in 2031, Kill Devil, Virginia Dare Trail Beach Road.
Right.
I understand that it came before the Board, and that there was an agreement that they're going to put in a suppression system, which is lovely, but I do believe that the size of the footprint, it does not really accommodate that size of a property being built there. It essentially is encroaching on the properties on either side, and as is, you know, well-known, there was destruction to all of those properties, and had the wind been blown differently, it would have taken down the building that I live in. And I'm very, very concerned about the fact that it seems that if you have enough money, you can manage to skirt the laws or whatever. The zoning codes, I know that there's a state mandate that won't limit in terms of bedroom numbers, but to be calling an 18-bedroom home, a single-family home, and zoning it as such seems ridiculous to me. So I'm not really sure where we're at with that. I know they got their count of permit, but they have not yet received the building permit, is my understanding. And I don't know, is there anything that those of us that are concerned can do to try and put some stronger restrictions on this?
Well, it hasn't been widely publicized, so I'm taking... Well, it hasn't widely publicized, but I take every opportunity to bring it to folks' attention that we've been working on this challenge for a decade or more. And, you know, I think when these lots were planted in the 50s or earlier, no one conceived of people going to the, to the, you know, they all have side yard setbacks, front yard setback. They're following all the same rules that this, that everyone else follows. But because we can't limit the size as easily now, and like you said, we can't limit by bedrooms, what this board has done recently, in the last couple of years, is put in place incentivization so that new large lots like that one developed have a big incentive to both putting a sprinkler system, but also we give developers the opportunity to have financial benefit to putting cottage courts and, I forget what one called, cottage courts and...
Clustered rooms.
And so there's two different legal ways to put multiple houses on a, on one of those deep lots. Kilable Hills has that unique challenge that we have some lots that are 600, 700 feet deep. And the price is baked in, the, the value of those lots is based on what you can develop on them. So, we're very excited about the fact that just in the next year or so, some of the smallest houses built on the oceanfront will be built in Kilable Hills probably in 30 years, if you ever take, maybe more. You guys would know better. But there'll be a bunch of 20, 2,500 square foot houses, and I can't remember the last time there was a 2,500 square foot house built on the oceanfront. When I was a child, probably.
So, yet the plan is to rebuild this 18-bedroom...
You can understand that if it was your house and the government came in and said you have to build your house smaller.
No, no, but just thinking about, if you've got 18 bedrooms, that's not one family. So, all of those cars that went up in flames and no room for the fire trucks to move in, they were on our property trying to put that, contain that place. I mean, to me...
It's good that you brought that up, because I almost forgot to mention that. Another ordinance we put in just in the last year incentivizes a drive aisle and extra parking, so there's a place that's marked...
Where are they going to put it? There isn't space.
Well, that's what we're saying. New development will have to. You can't really do much about what already exists, but we are trying to work on the future.
So, are you saying what is this grandfathered in because it was already built?
Correct, yes, yes. That's just the way it works, you know, nationwide, really. Most, most zoning ordinance, I would say probably 99, 100% of them have, have provisions that say that if you, if you lose your property to a natural disaster or fire, you're usually allowed to build it back.
Well, my understanding, I, I'm in Seawalk, you know, the condos there. My understanding is that if we burn to the ground, we are no longer able to build where we are oceanfront. We have to move back.
See, but no other rules on that one.
That's a, that's a CAMA regulation. That's a state regulation. It is not a town zoning regulation. And CAMA has a 50% rule. So, if your, your, your building is damaged more than 50%, it has to meet the existing CAMA regulations and you lose your, not for your grandfathering.
So, in other words, this property at 2031 is built far enough back...
It meets the CAMA regulations, yes, ma'am. So, so CAMA can stop redevelopment if you don't, can't physically move back from the ocean. If you could physically move back, then you can still build back 100% of what you had prior to the natural disaster.
And no one has control over how much space there is for fire people to get in there?
We've been fighting this for a decade and two decades probably. And a lot of this is heavy lobbying from the Home Builders Association statewide. There are powers that be that want to keep houses as houses for reasons that have nothing to do with us, that have to do with rich folks and their mansions in other parts of the state. That must be probably going a little too far, but they all have their motivations, I'll just say that. But certainly there, it has not been for lack of trying, a number of, you know, letters, meetings, and calls.
I understand that. I know that the attorney, is he gone? I know there's a number of people that have been involved in soliciting to the state. But I guess I'm just asking, as a homeowner, is there anything I can do? I know there's another woman who has a suit going, well, I'm not into sewing. That's ridiculous. You're fighting big money. I don't have that kind of... What can I do?
Just about your neighbor? Is that what you're asking?
About what they're really...
That it's not a safe structure. And that ridiculous gas tank, that propane tank that they have next door, that's what, you know, blew that place up. Why don't they have to have a line? I, you know, I talked to Cameron earlier today and he said, that's a homeowner's decision. But it's, it's not safe. I mean, what happened is that the propane tank has a gasket on it, the gasket melted and all of that propane added to, incinerated that home. We are just so lucky no one was killed. Is that what it takes? Somebody has to die before they start looking at the safety?
Like I say, it's, it's, that's a little over my pay grade, but my understanding from folks I know who are engineers that, that all of propane technologies, you know, have been engineered and engineered to be as safe as they can. But that nothing is 100%.
But it would be a lot safer if it was...
But yeah, again, it'd be a state regulation. If you, if you want to fight at the state level on how propane regulations are, you're braver than me too, but I, I see where you're going with it. You know, we prepare ourselves to what we used to be, but we also prepare ourselves to what we're not. You know, we are fairly rural. We have side yard setbacks and other parts of the world, houses are touching each other, you know. Cities all over, 85% of Americans live in a metro area. So, we're fortunate that we still have as much room between our houses as we do, and we're fighting hard to keep that. You know, all of us up here do this because we want to have the town be as, as wonderful as it possibly can be and as safe as it possibly can be. And, you know, we, we have fought hard about all the things that we can do to make it safer.
So, who, who is it at the state that governs the, who is it at the state that governs the propane situation?
You got to follow that up.
It's, it's the Department of Ag. Yeah, and when you get into public utilities, you know, there's natural gas and that's usually whoever the, the supplier would be for that natural gas would be who you want to talk to. But the Department of Ag regulates propane, agriculture, Department of Agriculture. They're going to tell you how it has to be tied down, how it has to be connected, what safety mechanisms you have to have. The town already has in place setbacks and flood damage prevention regulations that also help LP gas. Because we have had that problem, you know, post damage assessment during hurricanes. And we, we've tried to address that, but those are, those are state regulations with the Department of Agriculture.
We were, the town requires additional tie-downs of...
What else is there?
Securing it to where it's supposed to stay.
Oh, yeah.
So, it doesn't wash away or roll, right?
So, it doesn't wash away. So, we have additional measures for not letting it wash away in a storm and end up in someone else's house or in the road or wherever it might end up and leak the gas everywhere. But as far as a, a fire, that is way beyond what we can regulate. That would be the Department of Agriculture. And I think that they, they've regulated it fairly, fairly significantly. But, you know, when you have a fire like that, it's, it's nearly impossible to...
Say, anything in the way of that fire is going to be in trouble, no matter what it is.
Well, I think if you're listening to my concerns, and I know that you all have worked hard on this as well, I just feel pretty helpless.
Well, we feel for your situation and, and, you know, that's one of the reasons we all do this is we, we are in a growing town that couldn't imagine it looking like this when it was conceived in the 50s and 60s. And, you know, we're trying to steer the ship and do all the best things we can to both maintain it and keep, keep things moving at least slowly instead of so fast. But thank you for your input. We really appreciate it. I think we're still more folks from the public coming to our public forum. We do like public input. We tend to know what everybody thinks. Thank you. So, in the absence of much more public, is there any thought or need to continue with the public forum? All right, well, that is the, the next item on the agenda. But I would say before we adjourn that we should be thinking about dates for a fall retreat sometime, and maybe November. So, keep thinking about that between now and the next meeting, and we'll try to get something on the books.
That'd be great. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do it November, December.
Who's Saturday or...
And, yeah, up to you guys. Saturday, I mean, that's, my, my boss likes me at work every day, pesky guy.
Saturday, Saturday's worked better for everybody.
Well, I don't, just don't have any Saturdays in November.
Oh, okay. Sunday?
A Saturday is November, no one.
Oh, gosh. Well, I'm not opposed to doing it one weekday, evening, if that works.
What evening?
Get some, get some pizzas and...
Yeah, 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 yeah. Now you got interest when you said get some pizzas.
Pizza. It's a popular, popular event. Yeah, good. Get the, the fire department to cook the burgers again. People show up. They want to see on a calendar or cooking a burger. That's what it's for. Where is that calendar? Did you mention something about a motion?
You have a adjourned.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll start again.
We've got several seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You have a adjourned.
Thank you, guys.